Hello and welcome to WardTalk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Chris Watson from Ward Two. Welcome, Chris. It's been about a year since I've seen you.
Yes, well, thanks, Bonnie.
Yeah, so we have some catching up to do. This is your second visit with us.
It's my second visit, and it's always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you for coming. And Ward Two is the ward that you represent, and I know there's some things going on with Ward Two. So let's start with your ward. I understand there's some construction projects going on, so tell us about that.
So we just finished a round of public engagement for the Nixon Road Improvement Project, which will start in summer 2025. It'll go in three segments designed to avoid some of the construction going on with schools and kind of trying to keep access to schools around that Nixon corridor, which is, you know, Logan and Clegg. The sections that will start, it'll be adding three roundabouts. It'll start with Sandalwood Circle going here on Parkway North to Sandalwood Circle. The second segment will be in the summer of 2026. So that'll be Blewett Road up to just about Traver Road. And then the final section will be fall of 2026, and that's a little bit north of the schools. So that portion will go all the way up to Duveren and Green. And there's going to be pedestrian improvements. It's designed with bike safety in mind as well, and the roundabouts will help the flow of traffic there and keep everything at a safe speed because it's a heavily trafficked corridor. And, you know, the other thing is there's a lot of attention to the natural features there, and one of the proposed roundabouts was actually removed to help protect some trees up at Argone Circle.
So that will just add to all the roundabouts that we already have, so there's more to come.
It's true. There's more to come, but this was backed up from some traffic studies back done as recently as 2014 to 2017, and then again, just with the engagement just before this project.
Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing that done. And I understand there was some excitement about one of our sister cities visiting us from Germany. So just tell us a little bit about what the sister city arrangement is, because I know I saw a sign on State Road that says "sister cities," and it lists some of the cities. So what is that relationship with our sister cities?
Yeah, so our sister cities are, each relationship is a little bit different. Tubingen tends to be the most active, but there's also Haikone, where we've hosted representatives from their city. They actually had an event in Burns Park as well, but Tubingen--
What country are we talking about?
Oh, Haikone, Japan.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, there's Haikone, Japan, and then there's other cities that have fallen kind of into a little bit more of an inactive relationship. And we just took on a new relationship with the city in Ukraine.
Oh, really?
That's just to start. But one of the major things about sister city relationships is that it's a chance for staff to learn from, staff on both sides to learn from each other. And so our city and a few of our council members and the mayor went out in 2023 to visit Tubingen, Germany. They visited some of their social housing sites. They saw some of the sustainability work that that city has been doing. And so in turn, this past week, the city of Ann Arbor hosted representatives from Tubingen, Germany, staff, a few of their council members, and a couple actually members of the public from that city. And we, the trip was organized by the Office of Sustainability, so they really focused on showing that group's sustainability features in Ann Arbor and some of all the different kind of work we're doing, including some at the university.
And they were chosen as sister cities because the city, the makeup of the city is similar to our city? Is that--
Well, there's a little bit of that. Yeah, it does happen to be Tubingen also happens to be a college town in Germany, about 130,000 residents as well. But there's also a kind of a personal connection. There were twins that, one of them lives in Ann Arbor and one of them lives in Tubingen, Germany. And so that's actually like a personal relationship that has fostered the city relationship as well. And our mayor and their mayor have, you know, both traveled back and forth, going, you know, going back decades now.
Great. Well, that's something new we haven't talked about before. That's great. And in terms of any, I know a lot of things going on in your ward are also going on in the rest of the city. So let's talk about city issues right now. Let's talk about the election, so, because that's coming up soon. As of today, early voting is available. And there was one precinct change, I understand--
Yes.
--that you just wanted to mention.
Right, there's a precinct change that's relevant to Ward Two residents. This is Precinct 214. If you had voted at Palmer Commons, which was within the university last election, now that precinct will be going back to its former location in Angel School. We found that from residents' comments, that's a little bit more of an accessible location and a little bit easier to navigate. In addition, there's expanded clerks' office hours at UMA, the University of Michigan Art Museum, and that will allow a place for students to register, do early voting, and vote in person. And so between those two things, we hope both to serve students and increase turnout, and then also with Angel make the precinct accessible to residents.
Great. And just for people to know, they can register to vote right up to the day of the election. Is that correct?
They can register to vote the day of the election, but it's important to note that would have to be at the clerk's office downtown.
And probably a long line.
Right, exactly, exactly. But it is certainly possible, and I think also there will be that satellite clerk's office on campus. I know students, you know, I know when I was a student, I would always wait till the end to turn in my papers, and sometimes registration can be the same. But that shouldn't discourage anyone from voting, and we want people to take advantage of it as much as possible. There's ballot drop boxes. And really, any information or questions you have related to voting, mi.gov/vote is a great place to go to check your registration. There's also the city clerk's website as well.
Okay, so we'll be in full motion the next month. Also, you mentioned that you need to, if you want to go to a different polling place to register, it should be 15 days before the election?
If you need to mail in your registration--
Oh, okay.
If you need to mail in your registration, it has to be postmarked 15 days before the election. But if you, for some reason, aren't able to register by that time, you can register at the clerk's office.
Okay. Now, we've had an ongoing discussion about our concerns about the electrical grid and, you know, the DTE, and I see that there are commercials from DTE saying how they're trying to improve things. What's our position now? I know we have a contract in place with them. So can you just break down what we have with DTE and what we're asking for them to do and what our options are? That's a big topic.
So in Michigan, the utility franchises, or, you know, at least on the electrical side, you know, it's in perpetuity. And so that means any negotiation for the city to move away from DTE, it would require a big financial negotiation where DTE is able to reclaim some of their losses if the city was to take over some of their infrastructure. And right now, it was bid out. There is a Phase Two feasibility study that will help to value some of the DTE assets, so we'll know exactly what the city would be acquiring if we went down that path. That's going to give a lot of clarity because, as we know from, especially MPSC just released an audit, we know that some of that DTE infrastructure is in really poor repair. And, you know, we wouldn't want the city of Ann Arbor to be acquiring infrastructure that is, you know, not up to the standard. And so the, but the Phase Two feasibility study for municipal power will help us have a clear picture in terms of what it would take for municipalization, but more immediately. There is a ballot question before voters on authorizing a sustainable energy utility. And a sustainable energy utility would be a very quick way to start supplementing areas where DT is falling short in terms of solar power, neighborhood battery backups. It's an area, it could be, it would start as an opt-in program, but it would allow some more neighborhood resilience and focusing on sort of microgrids that, where eventually we would hope that that could become some competition to DTE.
So you're not really looking right now at doing some kind of complete change with DTE? You're looking to maybe fill in the gaps where things could be better?
In terms of the SEU, but in terms of the Phase Two feasibility study, that is information that, in the long term, could lead to a transfer. But yeah, just putting a value on what that would cost.
Okay, and one last question before our break. Are there any public meetings for discussion about this or planned in the future for public input?
I think once the feasibility study comes out, there will be a public discussion and work from OSI to kind of go over exactly what the report means and what the results, how the group came to the results. And so we'll look forward to that as the study completes.
So this is going to be ongoing for sure.
Exactly, for sure, for sure.
Okay, well, we're going to take a break now. We want to hear from you, so please email us questions to ctn@a2gov.org or tweet us at hashtag #CTNinArbor. We're taking a break now. We'll be coming right back with more from WardTalk.
The Ann Arbor Farmers Market, located at 315 Detroit Street, proudly brings fresh produce, beverages, artisan items, and more to the community all year. Our 105-year-old market is producer-only, featuring 125 vendors from Michigan. At Market, you will find seasonal fruit and vegetables, mushrooms, herbs, farm-fresh eggs, flowers, plants, honey, coffee, jewelry, art, and so much more. Market tokens for credit, debit, mobile pay, and Double Up Food Bucks can be purchased at our Market Office trailer. The market is open year-round, from 7:00 to 3:00 on Wednesdays and Saturdays through December. Between January and April, it will be open on Saturdays only from 8:00 to 3:00. Learn more about the long and unique history of our market at a2gov.org/market.
Hello, my name is Andre Anderson, and I'm the Police Chief of the Ann Arbor Police Department. You know, each year, millions of sports fans traverse through our city to watch football. We want to be your place of destination. Thank you for being here, and thanks for being part of a winning culture.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chief Patrick McGuire. Are you looking for great drinks and a cold beverage? The Main Street Social District is a great place to explore our downtown area while enjoying an alcoholic beverage. There's also lots of great tailgates in the stadium area. Just remember, outside of the social district, open alcohol is prohibited on public streets and sidewalks.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chief Jason Forsberg. From where to park to how to get around on game day, we've made it easy. Here's a QR code to help you navigate the city and provide helpful information as you travel to and from Michigan Stadium.
Hi, this is Bonnie Gabowitz for WardTalk. We're chatting with Councilmember Chris Watson from Ward Two. We've been talking about your particular ward, and we're now moving on to the city issues. There's something new that I haven't heard about, and that is that we got a grant.
Yes.
The EPA grant, so tell us all about that.
Well, last week, I was proud to speak at Green Baxter Court Community Center, where the EPA gave us a grant of $1 million to work on neighborhood resilience and specifically resilience at our housing commission sites. So I'm really grateful to Debbie Dingell and all of our federal partners, and especially the Office of Sustainability, for work to secure that grant. But on a personal level, that grant meant a lot to me because I had volunteered in high school at Green Baxter Court. So I went back to the same community where I had been doing after-school tutoring to announce that we had gotten money for what's called a resilience hub, and that will be electrical backup. It's an area that is meant to not lose power and be a shelter area, providing things like refrigeration, charging devices. So it'll fortify the community center against climate change impacts and electrical loss with solar and battery backups.
Does this have a period of time that it needs to be spent?
Yes, well, yes, I believe so. That's traditional with all federal grants.
Usually grants require some kind of timeframe.
Yes, and I think this is a project that will be worked on over the next couple of years. Bryant Community Center was an example of that, so there isn't an official groundbreaking schedule just yet, but the Bryant Community Center and Northside Community Center were able to get these up and running in about two years, I think, so.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, now we have, you mentioned that there's been some work in planning to help support the homeless population and give them service, especially now that we're coming into the winter months. So exactly what's going on with that?
So there's a couple different things. At the next council meeting, we will talk about directing funds from the Community Mental Health and Public Safety Millage. We want to use 40% of those funds for services on our housing commission sites. You know, these are the services at, you know, everywhere from the Lana Center to, you know, places like Green Baxter Court. But these services, you know, include everything from mental health and well-being to, you know, food provision and other programming on our sites.
Do you have any idea if the population has increased over time?
Yes, but the biggest increase we're seeing is actually in families. So we're seeing more and more families experiencing homelessness. At last count, you know, it was up above, it was, I think, 70% above the amount when some of those COVID eviction protection, it was an eviction moratorium that expired, and after that, we saw just a marked increase in family homelessness. And in one of my roles on council, I am the city's designee to the Washtenaw County Urban County Executive Committee, and that takes, you know, one representative from each municipal area within the county. And one of the things we help recommend is spending on, spending within the continuum of care, which helps anyone facing everything from eviction, homelessness, hunger in the community. And one of the things that we're helping to recommend to the Board of Commissioners is about $1 million in spending for the winter warming season. So they just had a first reading of that plan. And then in addition, there was some federal COVID recovery dollars. It was called Home ARP, so American Rescue Plan. And that money, we put out, some of that to service providers, and we just approved a series of grants for some safety net service providers to kind of take us, I think that money has to be spent by 2028. So between these different funding sources, we hoped that the voters will, you know, renew the Community Mental Health Millage, because we're taking about 40% of that, 40% of that rebate to help fund services. And then there's some federal money, and then from the, at the county level, this county money.
Is that going to be on the ballot?
The Community Mental Health and Public Safety Millage will be on the ballot, and that's a county-wide issue. And the city, in terms of the rebate, it's somewhere around $3 million we get, I think, rebated for because of the fact that we have our own police force. And so the county doesn't have to provide policing in the city, and so they send that money back to the city.
Okay, and I understand we have some street, the street repair has been going on, ongoing, and I do see a lot of success. Where now, some of the roads that were blocked are now nice, looking nice and new. But where are we at? Are we pretty much on schedule with what's going on with the street repair?
I'd say so. As part of the fiscal year '25 budget, we approved a project in each ward, a major streets project in each ward. And also, I think one of the things residents have really appreciated is our pavement condition dashboard. So if you just search, you know, a2gov.org and then pavement condition, you'll find a dashboard that shows, you know, how each street is rated, and then both the average rating for your local streets and for major streets.
Now, this rating you talk about, is it the condition of the street or how old it is or what?
It's the condition of the street. So, you know, one is a true failed road, you know, basically barely any pavement, and then up to 10. And there's a goal on the website for where we are. We're kind of right hovering around that goal, but when I talk to public services staff, they want to be very clear, you know, we know a lot of the roads are in, you know, fair to poor condition, and this doesn't, you know, we are not backing away from trying to meet all our goals. And even if we meet the goal, we will try to go beyond it. I think if you go on the website now, we're kind of right in the range of meeting some of the goals, but that doesn't mean that the roads are perfect, and it doesn't mean we're stopping. There's still a year, about a year left on the road bond, where the city had bonded out for $15 million to focus on road repair, and so that's going to continue through the end of this fiscal year, and then council will have to again reexamine--
So I have one question. Filling in the potholes, is that considered part of the street repair project, or is that separate?
It's somewhat separate. When we're talking about usually the pavement condition, it requires usually resurfacing preventative or preventative maintenance. In terms of the pothole filling, that's something where people can report that directly on A2Fix It, and there's money budgeted in for crews to come out and fill those potholes. And one of the things people often ask is, you know, we see a lot of filled potholes, but, you know, why couldn't you just reconstruct a small section of, or repave a small section of the road? And it's just very, very cost prohibitive. If you're going to resurface a road, you really have to resurface that whole road, and that is planned and prioritized from a database, from a, in a database process. And I think a lot of information is that online--
Right.
--with pavement condition and the planned projects.
And if you look at the itemized budget of the city, you can see what street repair costs.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's big, okay. And I know we've always been concerned about safety and traffic enforcement, and I'm wondering if there's any improvement since I know police are no longer stopping vehicles for minor infractions. Not that they won't get a ticket in the mail--
Right, they will get a ticket in the mail.
But the idea is to keep the traffic moving. So what's put in place, such as, you know, the poles to remind you where the lanes are, is that helping?
Yes. Well, so one point on the police enforcement, we are stepping up traffic enforcement because our chief has now focused traffic enforcement in line with our Vision Zero Pedestrian Safety Plan. So that means there will be increased enforcement along the corridors that have been identified as the most dangerous to pedestrians and the corridors that have the most crashes. So in terms of reducing stops for minor infractions, that's things like, you know, a broken taillight, a cracked windshield, any sort of moving violation, any sort of failure to stop at a crosswalk, that absolutely will be ticketed if there's an officer in the area. And there is a return both to the Vision Zero goals with our policing, and there's also some beat-based, neighborhood-based policing as well, so that cars are patrolling the same areas each day. So I think with some consistency enforcement, enforcement, we hope to see a little bit of improvement. You know, there's obviously a number of, you know, resource constraints, but the number one issue, I think, is also road design. And so every new project, for example, the Nixon Road Project is implementing buffered bike lanes, it's widening sidewalks, it's creating roundabouts so that there's fewer conflicted turns where you're turning left and maybe not exactly slowing down or not looking where you're going. So I think these are all designed to work in concert, and there's a list of, you know, quick builds and other projects the city is undertaking online. That's a good way to find it.
And I understand you are on a, there's a commission that's working on the Gallup Park Bridge and the Barton Nature Area. There was some redesigning or improvement done. So tell us about that.
So that's one of, I'm one of two council members that serves as the liaison to the Parks Commission, and, you know, in my opinion, Parks Commission is one of the coolest because it's so resident-driven there. One of the few commissions with budgeting authority, and so they really, they are the first look at the Parks Capital Improvement Plan. And one of the projects that just got completed is the B2B trail through the Barton Nature Area. So that's fully paved. They actually put in a natural playground, which utilizes a fallen tree to make a cool playscape for children. And then eventually, there will be a tunnel that connects to Bandonia Park. That'll start next year, but the paved portion of the B2B there is finished. And then Gallup Park is very close to, the Gallup Park Bridge is close to opening. Earlier this week, they poured concrete on some of the pedestrian sections, and you'll see intermittent closures for pedestrians, but usually going forward, it's pretty much open for pedestrians. Vehicles will take a little longer, but, you know, the project is really well on its way.
Wonderful. So tell me, you've been on the council for how long now?
Since November of 2022.
Okay, so that's two years now. So in the minute we have left, what's your personal take on your experience working as a council member and seeing all the projects and challenges? What's it like for you?
Well, I think it's especially fulfilling representing the ward I grew up in. There's so many times I've actually been reconnecting with neighbors where they were the head of the PTA while I was at King School, or they remembered me from performing in, you know, a local choir I did as a little kid. But I think, you know, reconnecting with the neighborhood I grew up in, but then also learning from city staff, that has just been really helpful. Staff is always there to answer our questions. The committees and commissions as well, you hear from the public, and then you also hear from the presentations of the way all the analysis is done at the city, whether it's how we plan road projects or, you know, how we try to use funds to support the most vulnerable members of the community. And big policy changes that try to have, create a fairer interaction with, you know, police and residents, for example. So I think taken together, it's one of, I think, public service is one of the best ways to kind of get connected with your community and to feel like you have a broad set of information in order to, you know, sometimes help nudge decisions in the right way, even if there's some big-picture issues we're always working toward. But I think it's really good to be able to advocate for my neighborhood.
So I see you're really invested in your community.
Yeah, invested in the community, invested in my ward, but in the city as a whole, of course.
Well, I want to thank you for visiting us today.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
And remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@a2gov.org. Attention, WardTalk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnininarbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of CTN's programs, head online to youtube.com/ctnininarbor. For WardTalk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month. Until next month.